The roll call.
Uh, Kevin Whitney.
Yes.
Dan Haynes.
Yes.
Emma Hans. Paul Drys.
Yes.
Paul Slowey.
Yep.
Beau Harbin. Lori Comfort.
Yes.
Chuck Fiesley. Wendy Miller.
Here.
Amy Bertini.
Here.
And Ann Swisher.
Yes. And I see we have a call in user, um, if you want to hear, if you can hear me, introduce yourself and let us know what application you're here on behalf of. Don't be afraid, we're easygoing. Okay.
In the chat, too. Add information in the chat room if they prefer.
Oh, uh. Well, let's move along. Um, everybody had a chance to look at the June meeting minutes. We could get a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move them.
A second?
A second.
You choose which one there. All those in favor of accepting the meeting minutes from June?
Aye.
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 There's Beau. Anybody opposed or see any conflicts?
Just the, oh, sorry, the one thing I noticed was that I was noted as being absent at the start, but I was actually present.
Okay.
In that first paragraph.
Oh.
Uh, no. Looks like it said you were here.
Yeah. There's a period after your name.
There's a period after my name. I'm sorry. I thought it was a.
Yes.
Sorry.
Never mind.
Sorry. I should probably make that a little easier to, to see. See if I can do that.
Okay, um, comments from me, I don't really have much to say other than sometimes I wonder about what the action after we have a review of an application, what happens with it after that? Is there, I wouldn't expect it for every application, but for some major ones that are kind of interesting or has a little controversy that holds us up and, you know, is there a way that we could get updates on those somehow?
Yeah, we could, um, so, uh, a lot of the towns, um, have to send us, you know, like the resolution that they end up doing with it. Um, so we'll always try and send those.
Some are better than others.
Yeah, some are better than others. I, I try and harp on them to get us that. Um, but I can send those when I get them to you guys.
Yeah, I was just thinking some real prevalent ones, not every one of them, but if that's easier to do it, just the whole resolutions, that'd be good. Either way.
A lot of them, actually, um, Alex will usually be chatting about because on his lunch breaks and in free time, he usually goes on to other municipalities', uh, uh, meeting agendas and minutes. So when we'll usually go, wow, I can't believe this happened or looks like they handled this like this. So, um, we can just kind of make note for some of those things 'cause it, it's hard with the timing. They don't always address them like the following month after we discuss them. Sometimes it'll come up, you know, kind of randomly, uh, depending on when, you know, what's happening in the municipality. So we can try to make like, um, maybe we'll just make like a, a note on our whiteboard in the office too of like, you know, when we see something come across our board that was like, uh, that had some more discussions surrounding it. Bring it up in the meetings.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Trisha, I'll turn it over to you for your remarks.
Yep. So, um, we are pretty busy in the office. The end of July is the, um, the deadline for our grant applications for the, um, for the comprehensive plan that we're naming the strategic development plan. Apparently, comprehensive plan is kind of an outdated term and we found some interesting documentation on the comparisons between what a comprehensive plan is and a strategic development plan. I think a comprehensive plan is a lot more static, um, almost like a snapshot in time. And, uh, so we want to work toward developing something that's a little more versatile, can be a little bit more like a living document that can be updated, um, more frequently as things change, like, you know, different, uh, things coming down the pipeline. So, um, so that, that is a big ticket item that we'll keep everybody updated on and will probably understand a lot more, know a lot more about, um, the county planning board's role, um, as we bring a consultant on board. And that'll be our plan is to, once we hear the results of the, of the grant applications, then we'll put out an RFP to bring a consultant on to help us with the process. It's gonna be a pretty big undertaking, so.
Uh huh.
And I will also know, it's looking right now like next month we will be meeting in person. Um, I know there's been a lot of back and forth between us and, um, uh, and Solon on their, um, updated zoning law. And we, we gave them some more information to chew on from the state, um, that the state, 'cause we, we coordinated with the state to see if they had any input and they had quite a bit of input. So we felt like Solon might want to digest that a little bit and see if they wanted to readdress some things that they had in their zoning law. Um, but they decided to pass it forward to us without, um, making many of those changes. So we'll be bringing that to the board, um, next. Well, it'll be on the agenda. We'll, you'll be seeing that in next month's report. So we'll, that's something bigger that we feel like we'd like to talk in person about.
Okay.
Just a heads up. But, um, yeah, we're chipping away. Keep them busy. And I know, um, we also had another conversation with, uh, Luanne, um, King from, uh, supervisor for Cincinnatus about, um, she was actually looking for a, um, a template for the municipalities to use for their GML referrals. So, um, that kind of, I know we started drafting one and we came up with a, um, a GML. We kind of revised the GML form that gets submitted to us. But, um, she was looking for and very in favor of something that their residents could use for them. So stay tuned on that. Hopefully we'll get it on our website someday and everybody can fill it out and it'll go into a database and not have copies of copies of copies to use anymore. That's our goal, but we'll get there. I think that's it for me. If Alex wants to get into the GMLs.
My computer's being a little slow today. Okay. So we've got three of them this time. Um, first one is a zoning map amendment for the purpose of rezoning a parcel entirely into the professional office zoning district.
Um. Hey Alex, I, I think you might be sharing a wrong screen maybe.
Am I?
The WebEx meeting is up. There you go. Perfect.
Yeah.
It's working?
Yep. Perfect. Thank you.
I don't know what I did. Um. Yeah, uh, the property is described as Alvina Avenue. I was in the city of Cortland. Uh, the parcels currently, uh, zone three different things, uh, PO, GB2, and R1, uh, which is professional office, general business, local, and low-density residential. Um, it's being referred to us because the 500 feet of Homer Ave and North Main Street. Uh, so this is the Guthrie-Cortland Medical Center, um, parking lot that, uh, they're kind of taking over Alvina Ave and we reviewed this last year. Um, their site plan. This is not the site plan. This is just a rezoning to make sure that whole thing is just in the same zoning district. Um, so this is the 12th application for the medical center. Um, I won't list every date, but most of them were to expand its current footprint. Some of them were for signs. Um, the majority of the parcels are already within the PO district. It's just kind of got smaller bits on the northern end being within GB2 and R1 districts. I'll show the map later. Uh, the parcel is currently used and will continue to be used for the site plan as ancillary parking to the, the main medical center there. Um, ancillary parking is allowed in PO and GB2 districts, but it's not allowed in R1 districts. So it will, um, change that from non-conforming to conforming in that bit. Um, whenever, you know, doing a zoning map amendment, it's important to look at the city, the comprehensive plan, the local comp plan. And, um, I won't get into it, but I'll just read the last sentence. "Since the expansion of the PO district and by extension, the medical center is northward mainly along Homer Ave and does not impact current residential properties adjacent to the hospital further than before, the zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, city comprehensive plan." Uh, finally, it is considered an unlisted action under SEAKER and, um, staff recommends approval of this, uh, application, uh, only upon compliance with SEAKER.
Uh, motion to accept staff's recommendations.
I make the motion. Amy.
Amy.
Yep.
Second?
This is Wendy. I'll second.
Thank you. Anybody have anything to add to the discussion? This was one of those things that I wanted to know about whether, uh, what was the current status of the Alvina Ave abandonment, whether that has been fully approved? Or I thought I had read that they were still meeting with the residents and like that. Can you give us an update on the abandonment of Alvina?
I honestly don't know what state that's in. Um, I don't know. I know they're, they're currently doing some construction there, but I don't know the status of the abandonment.
Okay.
I can find that out for you though and let you guys know.
Add that to our updated items.
Yeah.
Annie, I know, I, I know that they're in the process of having information of public informational meetings. Uh, I've seen them post it. I haven't attended any. And I was actually gonna ask the question, I don't know, uh, if anybody has attended any or heard any feedback from them as to, uh, the tone of the meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when we were talking about how some municipalities are a little bit easier than others, um, we're, we're hoping that sometime the city will, uh, post their, their meetings. Um, it'd be nice if they had recordings available of some of their meetings too. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, the, the city of Portland ones aren't always the easiest to find the follow-up on.
Anybody else have anything they want to add? Any concern about the redistricting? Well, how about all those in favor of accepting staff's recommendations?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Or abstentions? Okay then.
All right. Second one is a minor subdivision and area variance review for the purpose of subdividing an existing parcel to transfer just a little bit to a neighboring parcel. Um, the properties are described as 25 and 27 Clinton Street, uh, within the village of Homer. It is zoned R2 residential. Um, it's being referred to us because the property is located within 500 feet of Clinton Street and isn't a return because it's, um, a minor subdivision and area variance and it's right on Clinton Street. So figured that are safe to bring it to you guys. Um, essentially what they're trying to do is just move their current line three feet over, um, so that the neighbor here can redo their driveway slightly wider. So it's not quite as, it's really narrow there if you look at, um, look at some photos of it. Um, so section, uh, 22812D requires a minimum side setback of 15 feet. Um, the variance is needed because, um, it is, has, before was too small and is getting smaller, uh, to five feet, five and a half feet-ish. Um, an area variance will also need to cover the building on the other parcel, uh, which it wasn't clear on the application. So just a reminder that, um, you know, even though it's getting more compliant on this parcel here, this parcel here, it's moving away, it's still, uh, smaller than 15 feet. So they'll, they'll still need a variance for it, uh, which they can cover in the same one. Um, for the grant area variances, uh, the village has to balance the benefit to be realized by the applicant against any potential detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood or community. Um, and also at the end here, "Many parcels in this and similar neighborhoods in the village include structures which are legally non-conforming in this way." Um, "It's recommended that the village consider the commonality of these area variances when updating their, their village Homer zoning ordinance." I'm not sure if I mentioned this before, but they are looking at completely revamping their, their zoning code there. So I added that to kind of let them know that this is a common, it's a common problem. Uh, "Staff recommends approval of this application, um, only if the following contingencies are satisfied. One, that the village balance the benefit to be realized, uh, by the applicant against any potential detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of their neighborhood or community. At the village, consider the commonality of area variances such as this when updating the village Homer zoning ordinance and compliance with SEAKER."
And a motion to accept staff's recommendations.
I'll make the motion.
Annie?
Yep.
Seconded? Who was that? Amy?
Yep.
And any discussion? When you talk about, um, the village of Homer taking into consideration these commonalities that are going on, would it be normal or, or suggested maybe that they lessen the side yard setbacks? Or how would they take into account the problem that, of existing properties?
Um, they, yeah, they could go about, um, reducing that or coming up with some clever thing like, you know, there have to be, uh, 20 feet of side yard. That can be 20 feet on one side and zero feet on the other or five and 15. They could, they could do something like that.
Mm-hmm.
There, there's a couple of ways they could do that. Yeah. Making a kind of a, I wouldn't call it that, but like an old neighborhood district could also work, something like that, instead of just it all being R2.
Uh huh. Yeah, maybe something like, um, proximity of structures, you know? If you have two main houses that are together, at least give a minimum distance, not going by the property line so much, but by the structures themselves separation.
You could definitely do that too. Yeah.
Anybody else have any input?
Yeah, it's just, I thought it was a little odd that they didn't seem to, I mean, maybe they did, but, um, you know, the driveway could have gone on the other side. They have plenty of space on the other side as opposed to.
Mm-hmm.
But if the one owner wants to sell to the other and fix it that way, okay, I guess.
Yeah, they must be in agreement.
Right.
I, I haven't spoken to the applicants, um, so I don't really know what kind of deal they met.
Right.
There is a garage at the end of the new area provided that they're widening. So I assume, you know, to come in the other direction, you'd have to do kind of an S-turn to get into it.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting staff's recommendations?
Aye.
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 And nobody's opposed? Okay.
All right. I saved the big one for last.
Yeah.
Um, "The local law review for the purpose of maintaining the safety and general welfare of town residents by regulating high-impact commercial activities that have the potential to adversely impact roads and property." Uh, it's being referred to the county planning board because the law impacts, impacts property throughout the town. Um, sections 1, 2, 3, and 4, the standard local law title, authority, purpose, and definitions. Uh, section 5 prohibits trucks and qualifying vehicles determined to generate high-frequency truck traffic from using town roads in the town of Hartford. Um, high-frequency truck traffic is defined as "an individual vehicle or group of related vehicles that have three or more axles and which traverse or travel a combined 100 miles or more of town roads or other town property during any five consecutive days." Um, it does have exceptions for, um, for farming vehicles in there. Uh, "Section also designings a town of Hartford truck route consisting of state and county-owned and maintained highways within the town." Uh, "It's recommended that the town communicate with both DOT and the county highway superintendent about designating these truck routes, uh, on state and county roads." Lastly, the section mandates that signs be installed along all major, uh, highways entering the town. Um, "It's recommended that the town obtain permission from DOT and the county highway superintendent for those signs." Um, section 6, "Section 6 allows high-frequency truck traffic on town roads in the town of Hartford only after obtaining a permit, blanket permit or road use agreement." "Section 7 gives the permitting authority to the town board and enforcement authority to the town enforcement officers and police agencies of Cortland County and New York State." "It's unclear if the town highway superintendent is considered a town enforcement officer under the section, but it's recommended that the town consider granting the town highway superintendent enforcement authority under that section." "It's also recommended that the details of this enforcement be, uh, this local laws enforcement be coordinated and negotiated with the police agencies of Cortland County and New York State so that they understand that the law exists and, um, they can work something out for the enforcement." Uh, "Section 8 outlines procedures for applying for and obtaining said permits and blanket permits." Um, "The county and town highway superintendents are not given any authority in this process other than being notified." Um, a lot of the authority is given to the town board instead. So, um, it's recommended that the county highway superintendent, um, what did I say exactly? Uh, "Recommended that the town consider a larger role for the county and/or town highway superintendent in the permitting process 'cause they're likely to have more knowledge, um, on maintaining roads." Uh, "Section 9 outlines road use agreements as an alternative to obtaining the permits or blanket permits, uh, that go through a lot of the same steps. It's just kind of a formal agreement set up a permit process." Uh, "Section 10 places sole financial responsibility on the permighty for, um, uh, all damages, injuries, and damages, injuries, discharges, or spills that occur on town roads." Um, "The permighty will also be required to deposit $100,000 into a separate emergency repairs escrow account to pay for those repairs in case of immediately dangerous damage." Uh, and that is defined as damage to, or any damage to town roads arising from the permighty's high-frequency truck traffic that is, in the reasonable opinion of the town's engineer or highway superintendent, "an immediate danger to the traveling public." Um, since the county highway superintendent could, um, give a lot of insight on this, uh, it's recommended that they include, they consider uh, including the opinion of the town, of the county county superintendent as well. Um, "Section 11 requires the permighty to acquire liability insurance, um, for a minimum of $2 million, uh, $4 million for aggregate bodily injury resulting from each occurrence, and $500,000 for property damage." "Section 12 requires the permighty to obtain a maintenance bond." Uh, "Section 13 and 14 require, or outline the permighty's obligations further." "Sections 15 and 16 give authority to the highway superintendent and code enforcement officer to issue stop-work orders on violations of this law uh, and give the town board authority to suspend and revoke permits." "Section 17 outlines the special conditions and exceptions to the law." Um, "It does exempt vehicles owned and operated by municipalities and municipalities, fire companies, and utility companies in the law." Um, "It does not exempt vehicles and equipment used for farming, but that is exempt under definitions." So it is a little weird that it's exempting certain things here and then other things in other places. Um, just a note. Uh, "Section 18 outlines the penalties for violating the law. 19 specifies the town's rights. 20 requires permit applicant to deposit $25,000 into an escrow account to pay for a consultant or expert to assist the town if they need it." Uh, "Section 21 allows applicants to request a waiver for any section, um, to the town board. The town board can approve or deny that." And then sections 23, 24, 25 establish the local law's effective date, the integrity of, or and the integrity of the law. Um, "There is no section 22, so it's recommended that the town consider renaming 23, 24, 25 to 22, 23, 24." And this is an unlisted act under SEAKER. So staff recommends approval of this application, um, only from the following, only if the following contingencies are satisfied. "That the town communicate with both DOT and the county highway superintendent about designating truck routes on state and county roads. That the town obtain permission from DOT and/or the Cortland County Highway Superintendent for all signs posted along highways. That the town consider specifically granting the town highway superintendent enforcement authority under section 7. That the details of this local laws enforcement be coordinated and negotiated with police agencies of Cortland County and New York State. That the town consider a larger role for the county and/or town highway superintendent in the permit issuing process. That the town consider amending the definition of immediately dangerous damage in section 10 to include the opinion of the county highway superintendent. That the town consider renumbering sections 23, 24, 25 to sections 23, 20, or 22, 23, 24 respectively, and compliance with SEAKER."
Motion to accept staff's recommendation. Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to accept the staff's recommendations.
Thank you, a second?
A second.
Oh, thank you. Discussion.
What, what do, does anybody have any idea what they plan on building in Hartford that's so dramatic for this road thing?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Are they trying to avoid having uh the solar panels down there or something? It looks, being a contractor, it looks to me like somebody's trying to throw a gate in front of somebody.
Yeah.
They've um, they've had a few instances where one of their roads actually was destroyed um by a developer. And they had no legs to stand on. And I think that that's what instigated this. And I think they're mainly concerned about um. About um. Specific uh like utilities, whether that's solar or electrical utilities or um, you know. In some cases, extreme logging, and they've just run into the situation where they just don't have it within their budget. To repair these roads that are damaged pretty, pretty badly for this heavy truck traffic. And I think this is a situation though that's across the board for a lot of small towns because. The, the, a lot of you know that the town roads were just not originally designed for the kind of traffic that's on them these days. And obviously, you know, like the, the size and weight of farm equipment and a lot of these other, you know. Trucks and equipment that are out there. I know in the county level, they've been working to try to every time you rehabilitate an entire road. Um, you know, there's all different methods that you use now, and Dan probably knows best, you know, that. Trying to build for it, the widths and the weights they're meant to. Uh, they were originally designed for are just not sufficient. So that's kind of what, where this came from. They had one road in particular that they ran into a problem with. And it, it blew their budget out of the water, so they wanted to make sure that they weren't faced by that again. And Alex included a map um to of the town roads. Um, you'll know that there. There, what is it, Alex, twenty-eight miles total? Um.
Um, I don't actually know that.
I don't know. Um, I think it was like in the mid twenties if, so. It's not, I think it's only going to come to fruition in very specific um instances. But I think a lot of, most of our concern with this proposed law that came up for us. Was really the power that's delegated to the town board um when they might not and. Regardless of who's been on it or is on it or who may be on it in the future, they might not always have the expertise and the knowledge. Um, about, you know, road construction. Um, to be able to have the authority that this law is designating. And so a, a lot of that was where we circled back around so and took some of that or suggested that. They could include participation on the county level so that it wouldn't be affected. Regardless of what individuals were on their town board or who their highway superintendent was. Um, or their code enforcement officer. I mean, Adam Brown's their code enforcement officer now. He's great and he probably have really great advice when it comes to this, but. You know, not all code enforcement officers have, you know, are knowledgeable about road construction.
So if they designated specifically what roads they want to post?
No, and that was a lot of our concern too. Um, it, the truck, the tru- designated truck route. Has not been determined yet and wasn't included in the law. And they also um could not. As far as we could tell, I don't think there was a lot of conversation with the county and the state. Um, if that would be acceptable and if they would be allowed to put signage designating a truck route. Onto the county and state routes. Um, and that was kind of the same line with the enforcement they had in the law, in their law, they included that. County and state um law enforcement would be um imposing, you know. Would be um the individuals tasked with enforcing this law. But again, we don't know. Um, we have not heard that they actually discussed these things to date with the county or state level law enforcement.
I think that's too broad of a stroke to, to give them that authority. And again, who's gonna dictate what roads can or can't be closed? It sounds like what happened in Skinny Atlas quite a few years ago. When they tried to shut the traffic down, the main dragon, it was a disaster.
Yeah, and in fact, I know just from experience with the county. And the county imposed the flow control for um, they have a specific route uh designated for haulers. And um, the county sheriffs can't even investigate situations of individuals using that county haul rope. That the landfill had to contract with a pro- uh with a, like a. And contract with the county sheriff's office specifically to have a, an officer investigate. Individual cases. They had to like hire them on the side of that because they don't have the capacity to be able to handle. Each and every municipalities, you know, situations um all over the place. So that would be my guess is that if the town felt like something was occurring within the town. If they saw, saw there was all this truck traffic on Hillsinger Road or something, they would have to call and, you know. Contract specifically with the county or the state and say, hey, can you send a trooper over here to sit on this road around these times? Um, and that would be separate.
I think, I think we got bigger issues. Throughout the, the county, the city, the, the state and else, other than, other than this, but I guess.
Yeah.
What does that do like Darryl Cross, I'm sure more than one week a year travel a hundred miles on the town roads? Where's that put him?
Yeah, I thought when I first read this was that there must be some superstructure gonna be, it being proposed to come into. The little village of Hartford and um. When I worked on uh creating the windmill ordinance for the town of Solon. The NYSERDA actually strongly recommended that towns look into preservation road laws. And, but that's dealing with wind turbine loads, you know, there's some of those that they couldn't even turn a corner. Without rebuilding the road on, on certain municipal roads that we have in Solon especially. But um, I kind of was concerned about their fee schedule. I kind, I looked up Tompkins County and it seemed quite exorbitant for their fee schedule. With their liabilities and their bonding and everything else, so. I didn't know if they had compared that or just kind of pulled it out of their hat what they wanted to make off the fees.
They did um hire a, um, they had an attorney's office that uh worked on this. And they, they indicated that the attorney's office had um looked at several other road preservation laws in preparation of this. So, cause we, we expressed the same um concern originally. We were like, wow, I think the. The deposit was a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, and, and honestly, and I, I was thinking, what came to my mind? And I think that they've got a couple of solar, um, I think they have a couple of solar projects that may be coming to the area, but they. But I thought specifically like if, if there's a private landowner who lives on one of these roads and is having their property logged. Um, if ultimately, to me, it seems like that landowner would be the one paying the cost for this. Cause they're not gonna be able to get as much profit, cause their logger isn't gonna incur all this additional costs, but um.
True, yeah.
You know, that, and then, and if I was a, you know, some property owners might not. So, but they indicated they felt like that, you know, wasn't a huge um amount for some bigger. Uh, developers or um, you know, if it's a solar or a, you know, an energy company. So, you know, we.
It would just hurt the little guy, you know, the. A driller or, you know, a, a logger.
Farmer's logging off a large section of woods, it'd be a lot of trucks going through, I would think, and those guys don't have a lot, but. I don't know, it seems like a very high prices that people are gonna have to pay. The other question I have is the truck routes that they haven't developed yet, are they, and the permitting? Is the permitting process, I couldn't quite follow, is it only on the truck routes they're allowed to use? Is that what the permitting process is? Alex, you know?
Uh, so I think if, if they use the designated truck route, they don't need permits. Uh, but if they go off and they use the town roads um and they use over a hundred, over a hundred miles over five days or something. On those town roads, then they need a permit. Yeah.
I have a question. I have a question. Section fifteen and sixteen code enforcement officer to issue stop-work orders on permittees in violation. Does that mean if you have a construction project, he's gonna issue a stop-work order on the construction project?
I believe that's what the intent was, yeah. If there's trucks there that aren't on a permit, um, and they're using a non-designated route.
Wow. That's a lot of um, that, that's a lot of authority on a code officer when it has nothing to do with construction. But, my thing.
We, we had a similar concern there, which is why we um recommended adding in the um. Town highway superintendent and the county highway superintendent in a lot of these, these decisions.
So the propane facility's never been an issue for them?
That's not, is that really active anymore?
I don't know. I, that's why I'm asking. I, I know it used to be, so that's why I'm confused why all of a sudden they, cause I think that used to be very active.
I believe it still is. I seen trucks in there not long ago.
And I think that. There's not by pipeline though, and not so much trucks.
I have no idea. I just, like I say, I did see some trucks in there not long ago. I don't get through there very much.
My guess is that's on two twenty-one though, isn't it?
Yeah.
Like right off of two twenty-one, so my guess is they're not really on a lot of the town roads, so they're not as concerned with those. They probably come into the state and, you know, over the county routes.
Uh huh.
Yep, I saw you.
Is my guess. I think they're, you know, I think the larger concern is, you know, logging and development. Up on those town roads, you know, up there on a Wego Hill Road and Adams, and, and I mean, they've got a lot of. You know, nice, I know, and I, I wanna say, I thought they said the issue that they had had before was on Griggs Gulf Road. I don't know if anybody is really familiar with that. I think that that got. Pretty beat up and they've been having issues with it ever since, and I think that's where it stemmed from.
You mentioned, Trish, I don't, I don't see the sheriff enforcing this at all. I mean, from my experience with him.
What's that?
Said, from my experience with the sheriff, and you kind of mentioned it, I do not see him in enforcing this one bit. He doesn't have the resources or the time, and I'm not trying to speak negatively, but he doesn't have the time to, to do anything. And I don't see police doing it either.
You know. To us, it seemed like it was, you know, laying a lot. We just had concern that there wasn't a lot of communications with the entities that are really being, having. You know, additional. Workload put on them, I guess, you know, whether that's the um, you know, just the additional traffic. And, and having a designated truck route without, you know, communicating. And coordinating that with the state and the county already. Um, you know, that's why we, that's why we tried to make some strong recommendation that these, these things be looked into. Before they actually enforce uh or enact or adopt this law, I should say.
I do, do feel good about our recommendations that it is involving the counties and the town highway. People instead of just the town board and, so I think their, our recommendations are good. Unless anybody wanted to add to it, but. I'm good with the recommendations.
And maybe he's the one that, you know, came into it.
I just don't get specific enough relative to what they want to show. I, I mean, I, I don't agree with it. It's one more regulation and from a business standpoint, there's enough regulations out there.
That's, I mean, I'm, I'm brand new to this process, but that's exactly what I was gonna say. I don't think the highway, the county highway and superintendent has any time for this. And I, I get the recommendations, which I understand what you're saying, but if it was me, I'd just flat out vote no. Cause I just think this is a little bit outreach um for the town, but I. I, I agree with your recommendations, but I don't think those individuals that are being recommended to be involved have any time to be involved with any of this, to be very sure.
I agree.
Yeah, the, the only reason too that we did include um more of the highway. The high, the county highway superintendent has jurisdiction over the towns. And in fact, according to highway law, I mean, towns are supposed to be submitting, you know. Proposed projects or five-year uh plans on their roads. Cortlandville does that actually. Um, so I don't think it would be, and we did contact the county highway superintendent as part of the CRC project or process. And um Charlie read through it and looked over it too, and he had a lot of the same concerns. Um, uh, but he, he did actually say that he would be happy. I mean, it would only be in extreme cases and it would really be. We thought that the county involvement would be more useful as far as being able to advise. What current cost estimates are on materials and current construction methodology. That they might want to use and give them a, a ballpark idea of how much, whatever kind of road construction they might need. Whether it's only the shoulders, like shoulder stabilization or full, full-depth rehab. Uh, what kind of current costs would be associated with that, just to give the town an idea. Or go out and say, hey, you know, really, this to me, it looks like your standard breakdown. When was the last time you surfed through this road? When was the last time you did this? You know, I don't know if this is really worth pushing, just that kind of advice. But, and um, and, and it is, I think, I think we did. We did try to make note of that too with the um, the spec section in highway law. That refers to the county highway superintendent.
Yeah, there's a part in the highway law that says that if town requests. From like requests aid from the county superintendent, uh, he has to help, something like that. Um.
But I.
Yeah.
I definitely understand what you're saying too, Kevin. I think it's. But, you know, we felt that if, if the town feels strongly and the townspeople are on board. Um, with that understanding of those potential, you know. The potential risks like with logging, um, you know, it, it is still municipal. Um, you know, they still have home rule and if it's something they feel strongly about enacting. We felt that the best we could do is just provide recommendations that would. Give them a responsible, um, you know, and a good process to work through and just really to. To increase the communication with the parties that are involved in the law.
I agree with Kevin. I, I, and I, I, I agree with your recommendations, but I don't agree with the, the overall proposal.
Did I read that there were special conditions that could be, instead of a permit, you could do. Some other form of allowance to use. I didn't. Started reading the entire law, but.
Right here, uh, section nine. Uh, alternative to permit, they can you get a road use agreement. Um. It, it has, that agreement has to conform to the minimum requirements of this law anyway. Um, but there could be additional terms and provision, provisions that are reasonably required for the town. Could, you know, insurances, maintenance bonding. So I could see them, you know, if they wanted an agreement with the town instead, have less of an insurance or whatever, you know.
Right. That's what I was thinking, that they might be lenient on smaller projects or conditions like that.
Yeah, I personally don't have a problem with them trying to pass a law to try and save the town some money from somebody destroying their roads. So I'm not sure I'm against the idea of the regulation. I think it's going to be very difficult for them to enforce, because somebody's going to be up there running a bunch of trucks until somebody finds out about it. The job might be over unless it's like, say it's a large project that's going on for a long period of time before they even get around to looking at it. But, uh, I don't really have a problem with trying to pass a law to protect their their assets from being damaged by somebody who's not too careful, but, uh, hopefully they'll think about this and maybe look at some modifications to it.
I think, I think Trish hit the nail on the head, which is the question I was going to ask regardless. They can do what they want. You're just providing recommendations, which I think are important. Whether, I mean, I don't live in the town of Hartford, so whether I agree with what they're trying to do or not. I think it's important, the recommendations you've offered, and I think that's kind of how you coined it, Trish, which I think is important to help me realize that the, the planning board is doing the right thing by saying, this is the things you should look at. Bottom line, they're going to do what they want and I get how it goes for them. I mean, yeah, it goes well for them, but.
And you might be cutting off their nose and spray to their face too, and losing some opportunities.
Right.
My, the, the individual from the town board that we talked to, he in no way, I mean, he really appreciated. We touched bases with him first. We usually like to anyway, after we get the comments back from the CRC, especially on things like this and say, find out who the key person on the plan, on, on the town board really that was spearheading it uh huh, with and, and, uh, with his attorney. And, um, he appreciated the comments. He thought they were great comments. So he was looking forward to our formalized report to bring back to the board and he definitely said they want to do this right. They don't want to hurt any of the little guys. They, um, you know, they, and, um, they only want to do it once and do it right. But I got the sense also that they did want to move pretty quickly. And my guess is as they have developers come into the town and meet with the town board, this will kind of come in. The town board will have this and have it, their goal is to have it in place and be able to give it to the developers as they come in and say, okay, sure, but here's also something that you need to do that protects us. That, that was the sense that I got. And I think that they saw the writing on the wall, some stuff coming down the pipeline for them, so.
Well, shall we take a vote and see if it passes or not? Anybody else want to add anything before we do?
I just hope that the town has a good attorney because I think they're going to get sued right out the gate. Um, you know, the, these, these provisions that say, you know, nothing is to be, you know, construed about, uh, uh, interstate commerce and, um, you know, the right to farm and all that sort of stuff. They're going to have a logger come in and say, I'm taking the logs out of Hartford and I'm driving down to Pennsylvania. Stop me. And you know what they're going to do, uh, you know, but I, and I, so Kevin, I agreed, you know, with you, what you and Paul had to say, but I think in the end, the best we can do is probably with what the recommendations are and then let the town go from there.
I agree.
I think laws are meant to be amended eventually and it's goes by reaction to what they are, so.
I agree.
Well, the old adage is, you know, be careful what you wish for, so.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, all those in favor of this staff's recommendations?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Hey.
Let it be shown.
All right, um. Lastly, I had three returns this month. Any questions on any of them? Happy to. Yep.
I hate to interrupt, but I gotta go. See y'all later.
Thanks, Paul.
See you in person next month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no questions. Thanks.
I just had a comment, I guess, uh, probably for Bo's, uh, use at the county level. Um, we just went through the season and we really don't have anything significant or substantial adding to the asset based, uh, with regards to construction or development. And although sale tax dollars are up and that's good, as you know, that's a very fickle thing, Bo, so just realize, you know, we've lost the season, there's nothing significant taking place other than some not-for-profits expanding. So I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's a canary in the coal mine, but it's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Well, but we are starting a bunch of, you know, there are a lot of infrastructure projects that are really kicking off. So hopefully those will help, you know, pay dividends. We get Apex cleaned up, uh, get work done, you know, downtown. I'm, I'm listening to them rip up downtown every day now. Um, you know, hopefully some of those things will help, you know, we get those cleaned up and we can, uh, move forward on some construction next year, but I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
You know, it's really interesting. I think Alex, don't you have the, um, we made like a, do we have a tally of how many GMLs come in each month for so many years?
Yeah.
We have that data. Like what, because we were trying to track like where the highs are, you know, what time of year we get more and less. And I, I thought that was really interesting information and data that we were discussing. We were talking about it one day and Alex put it together.
I charted all the way back to the founding of this board. Interesting chart.
We could, we could share that with the board if anybody would like to see. I mean, it's kind of neat to see what years there were.
Yeah, I, I keep it updated, so.
It would give us an indication of the seasonality aspect too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kind of ebbs and flows.
Uh huh. What years would be interesting, you know, where the big booms were.
Yeah. See how it correlates to the market. We actually anticipated the summer to be a lot busier than we've seen it thus far. We thought it would be.
Yeah, I think it's, I think, I think it's concerning with regard to construction.
I agree.
Well, who is the developer there that put a hold on his project for almost a year because of the cost of lumber and stuff?
Oh, Jim Reaters did, I believe.
Yeah. He's going forward, but it seems like not, not at a very fast pace, maybe has.
No, pretty slow.
It's getting. To the point that was raised earlier, I mean, some of the things of knowing where some of these items were that we voted on previously end up would be good to know, like for example, that big mixed use project that we voted on, um, by the Jam Murray Center in the end got canned by the state because they were too close to the mine. And yet it, you know, we voted on that, we went through that, but and then it disappeared off our radar because it, it ended up getting canned by the state. So it'd be good to know where some of these bigger projects kind of end up just to see. But we also know like, uh, the, um, the wellness center, uh, the one over next to Burger King is done. Uh, we worked on that a couple, you know, a year and a half ago. But the, the Kaiga Health Center where the tire place was, that's well under construction. So it's good to see some of these things, you know, come back, but definitely some fall off the radar and it'd be nice to know, you know, kind of what happened and.
Well, that. Yeah, there's some burned areas now too. Yeah, I had mentioned earlier in the beginning, I don't know if you heard Bo, but I had said maybe the big projects we could be updated on to see what the resolutions were within their own towns and municipalities.
I think that was a great idea. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm curious.
I wonder if we could have like some kind of shared document that we all, because sometimes like you guys will have different local knowledge or, you know, different contacts as well about some of these projects. Um, you know, I mean, we, we're usually scrolling through or we'll get the, the resolutions or things, but I wonder if we could have, you know, like how shared Google documents, you can kind of share and add and edit.
Maybe, maybe an Excel spreadsheet or something.
Yeah. Yeah, that everybody just kind of has access to. We can kind of, you know, when we do a month's worth of GMLs, we can, you know, just add the big ones. You know, or the ones that there was a lot of discussion around, like the caboose, for example, we talked about the caboose a lot, the caboose is in.
I guess it's doing very well. It's very busy all the time.
And you know, it's already on Google Maps. I was looking up the hospital plan today and I saw, there he was, Frosty the caboose.
Yeah. Wow. They, very determined.
But we don't yet have a crosswalk.
I noticed that too.
No, there is one right down the road that goes across to the park though. Um, not right across from the, the caboose, but across by the entrance of the park.
By the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yes, I agree with you, Bo. Circle back and circle back around on that stuff, but maybe, I don't know, we'll brainstorm that, like some kind of document that we could all share. Might be.
Put our heads together and think, that's a good idea.
Anybody have any announcements they want to make? No? How about we wrap this up and get set for our next meeting in August and I guess meeting in pub, in person.
Looking that way.
Thank you. Take care of all.
We need a motion. Adjourn.
I'll make it.
Take one. Thanks. We didn't have one last time.
I know. Did we get a motion?
Yeah.
I did it.
Yep, I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Bye. Good night.
Thanks for the evening, everyone.
Good night.